Welcome to the Board Wrap-Up. We hope you're having a great summer. It's the Board Wrap for June of 2014, three weeks into the summer break. And Dr. Pennington, a recent board meeting. We're just going to kind of let you have the floor here and discuss some of the things that happened. I know that test scores of students is one of the things you address to your constituents.
Well, June meeting is always a, you know, it always kind of looks the same. We started with a budget hearing where we talked about what our budget's going to be for next year. And for once, for the first time in a long time, we have a glimmer of good news. Now, it's not great news. It's not, you know, we're not back to where we should be, but we have more money. We actually, for the first time, have more money flowing through the funding formula than we've had in a number of years. And we think that this year, we got enough money that it should even account for whatever growth we have in students across the state. You know, Oklahoma's growing. We have, I think, 30,000 more students than we had in the 2009, 2010 school year statewide. And so, which is good. You want to grow, but if your amount of money you have stays constant, that means you have less money to spend per child. And that's where we've been. I've talked about that on the show before, that we've had the largest cut percentage-wise in state funding in these states. We've lost 22.2% of our funding. So, we've got a little bit more money into the formula. We think that what that means for us is we'll have an additional $200,000 next year, which again, in a $33 million budget, is not really much help, but at least it's not going down. And so, the term I've used is we've slowed the bleeding a little bit. We've still got a cut. We're not healed up yet, and we won't be healed up until the legislature puts $160 million more dollars into the funding formula, just to get us back to where we were in 2009, 2010. But we've been hemorrhaging, and now we're just bleeding a little bit. So, we've put a couple stitches in, and so that's good news. We also did a lot of contracts. We have lots of people that we do business with for everything, from software vendors for curriculum programs, to the switches that help our internet system run. Those things we do every year, and we took care of that. We also approved contracts to start putting a new roof and new air conditioning system and fix the drainage over at Lincoln, which is a big project. And so, we're going to get ready to start on that. That will go on during the school year. Last month, we approved contracts to start the renovation at Woodlands School. Viewers may or may not know this, but we're actually going to shut Woodlands down next year. The students who attend Woodlands will go to the Washington School, and they'll have school there for a year while we're in doing renovations to Woodlands. Those renovations include moving the office to the front of the school, so that we can create a safer environment where before anybody gets into the building at Woodlands, they have to go through the office with not a bulletproof glass area, but a bullet-resistant glass area. So that, you know, if you think about, people remember that a year and a half ago, what happened at Sandy Hook, is that we had an intruder come into a school. He shot his way through the glass, went into the school, and, you know, killed 21 children. So, you know, again, as we try to improve security in our building, we're going to be doing stuff like this across the district. Stuff, improvements that we make that we hope we never need in this community. But I saw yesterday, there was a shooter in Oregon. So, you know, I don't know what the answer to all this is. But it just seems to me like we go through these phases where somebody's got a gun, and whether they're a university, whether they're a student, whether they're at a high school, at a mall, that it seems to be like almost sometimes it's open season on just citizens. And, you know, I don't know what the balance is between an individual's right to possess a firearm and the protection of citizens to just do things like go to school, and go to the mall, and go to the movie, and not be fearful that somebody's going to open fire on them. I mean, there's got to be a balance. And, I mean, in a democratic society, there has to be a balance between those. We haven't found it yet, and it's pretty obvious to me that arming everybody isn't the solution, because I don't notice that any of these guys seem to be afraid that somebody in the mall or somebody in the school's already got a weapon on them. So, we've got to figure that out, and we have to make an effort. We've got to have a conversation. There's got to be a way to have a conversation between those individuals who so adamantly believe in their right to possess firearms, but the rights that everybody else has to just live. So, anyway, the thing that I did talk about, we talked about funding, obviously. We also talked about state testing, and we specifically talked about the state writing test. We take a writing test each year in 5th grade and 8th grade. Two years ago, across the state, writing scores were, you know, generally 75 to 90% of all 5th grade students in state were proficient in writing. And so, kind of to give the audience a understanding, well, what does that mean? Well, the state sets out a rubric, and they say, "These are the things that we're looking for in writing. We want to see that students write in complete sentences, and they write in paragraphs." We look at, they want to see what, they want to look at word choice. What kind of, you know, what kind of words do they use in their writing? They look for developing an idea, okay? And they look for things like paraphrasing or citing sources. So, there's a rubric, and they tell us that, you know, the rubric, every portion of this is worth so much percent of the grade. So, we train students to write that way. We do, you know, five paragraph writing. We teach them in, teach them five paragraph, or seven paragraph, or whatever. There's all kinds of different methods. So, we teach kids to write in a specific way. So, they take a writing test, they send it off, and then it's evaluated, and we get our scores back. Well, last year, they changed the rubric on us. They changed what they wanted to see kids write and the different percentages that different parts got. And they didn't tell us until the test had already been given. And so, this year, we knew what the rubric, they kept the same rubric, and we actually brought State Department people in to train our staff. And again, you know, this is, we want to see paragraphs, we want to see good word choice, we want you to use adjectives, you know, we want to see descriptive adjectives, those kinds of things. And so, we took our test and really thought that we were going to do very well this year. We got our test results back, and they were worse than they were last year. And, you know, any time that happens, curriculum people and classroom teachers start to look at what they did. What did we do? What did we do wrong? Why didn't? Because we know how our kids write. We know what our kids do. So, we got the test results, and another thing we do is we research other districts, and we say, you know, we send emails to Sand Springs, Bardisville, Stillwater, Union, Jenks, Broken Arrow, Edmond, and we say, "What do your test scores look like?" And when we did that, we got emails back saying, "Our writing scores are terrible." And by, at that time, we didn't have anything other than our scores. Later on, the state submitted to us the actual writing that the kids did. They made copies of the students' tests, sent those back to us with the rubric and individual student scores. And so, we noticed some things. The first thing that jumped out at us was that whenever, when you look across the rubric, and I think the rubric had five different divisions, we noticed that our student's scores were consistent across the rubric. So, what's supposed to happen is, the reader is supposed to read the paper, and the first thing they're supposed, say they're supposed to look at, sentences and paragraphs. So, they look to see, they're not reading content. Is the student writing in complete sentences? And does the student have paragraphs? And they give them a score, 1 to 5. Now, you know, paragraphs are pretty easy. Do they indent? Is it, are they changing topic when they have a new paragraph? Are they punctuated? And so, you give them a 1 through 5 on that. The next item might be word choice. And so, you read through the paper, looking at the word choice that kids use. Are they using descriptive language? Is the descriptive language, is it appropriate? And you give kids a score, and then you go on content and all the way through. Well, what we noticed is that our student scores, if they got a 2 in one area, they got a 2 in every area. If they got a 1 in every, one area, they got a 1 in every area. So, it was like, almost as if they, the readers were reading for whatever it was, and if you got a 2 in that, they just gave you a 2 all the way across. And that's just not typically what happens. If you go back and look at our test scores from the year before, what you would find is you'd find a student may get a, he may get a 2 in sentence structure, sentence and paragraph. They may get a 1 in grammar. They may get a 3 in content. They may get a 1 in something else, and a 4 in something else. We don't, we didn't see a consistency of scores all the way across. As we talked to other curriculum specialists in other school districts, they saw the same thing. So, that was a pattern across the state of Oklahoma. So, what it, and so, our initial reaction was, we didn't, our tests weren't scored, we didn't get, we weren't scored right. That the people that were reading the test, that were scoring the test, either they either weren't trained appropriately, or they just knew their job very well. We took it another step. We brought in our teachers. We brought in a group of teachers last week, and we randomly pulled some student writing. And we pulled students who scored proficient. We pulled students who scored unsatisfactory. We pulled students who scored advanced, and we asked them, using the State Department rubric that they had been trained in, to score those tests. Well, when our teachers scored, the first thing that was, that we found is that they had, they didn't, students didn't get the same score all the way across. They got 2s and 1s and 3s and 4s. They had a multiple of scores, okay? The other thing that we saw is that, is we saw examples of what we thought, our teachers thought was very good writing, that was deemed to be unsatisfactory or limited knowledge by the people who graded the test. Again, as we talked to curriculum people across the state, we're seeing the same pattern. Some of the, some, you have students in, that are A/B students that did not pass the state writing test. You have situations where students are, or maybe struggling students who did pass the writing test. So, you know, we're not seeing what we consider to be a consistency in scores. So, what do you do about it? Well, we had about, in each, in each building, about almost, almost exactly half the students who scored unsatisfactory, or, excuse me, were not proficient, were one point away from having a satisfactory score. So, if those students would have had one point more, our proficiency rates in those buildings would be up in the 75, 80% level, which is where they'd been in the past. And that's also unusual, to have so many students across the district that are only one point away from being proficient. That's just very, very, we don't, we don't have a past history of that. So, the choice we have is we can spend $125 a test and have those tests regraded. And, of course, there's no guarantee that the score would be different. And then, the question is, is do we want to spend thousands of dollars rescoring tests when we already know, we're pretty confident that the results that we have are not accurate? So, that's the debate we're having right now. Do we rescore the test? Do we ask for a rescore? And is it really going to make any difference if the people who scored the test are the same people who scored the test before? Kind of an interesting sidebar. One of the, there's lots of education blogs right now. Lots of people have turned into blogging. And one of the bloggers actually found the advertisement that McGraw-Hill sent out looking for people to grade the writing test, which were, which was in Florida. And they were looking for college students. I don't remember now if they had to be college graduates or not. But had it in the paper, "We're going to, we want, we're looking for people to grade these exams, dah 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 dah." And then, they paid them 1125 an hour. You know, so, so the test, so basically, the tests were graded by folks looking for a part-time job. And, and so, maybe that's part of the difference. You know, maybe the difference is that there's, that a trained educator who teaches writing for a living looks at writing differently than a college student who may be an English major, journalism major, a math major, or whatever else they may be. And so, that accounts for some of the differences in the scores. I'm sure that it would be very expensive to get teachers to grade tests, to get certified teachers to grade tests. It would drive the cost of the test up. But again, it just kind of goes, it just reinforces, once again, you know, we put all this money into assessment. We spend all this money on assessment, but the assessment is only as good as the people who are writing it and the people who are grading it. And it's just, you know, and another part of it is, you know, McGraw-Hill has no incentive to do anything for Oklahoma, because it's, because we're dropping them as our testing contractor because of the problems they had this last year. So, there's no incentive for them to give us their highest-level test graders, because we're already done with them. So, it's a mess, like everything else has been a mess for the last four years that the current administration's been in charge of the State Department of Education.
Well, with that in mind, on the 24th, people have a choice to go to the polls, and there'll be different races. But one of the races is going to be for the superintendent of schools. And again, this is not the November election, but if you follow it in all reality, the winner between Burrissey and Hoffmeister probably is going to be our next superintendent. And I don't know how political you can get, or you even want to get, because you have to get along with everyone. I would just encourage people to make sure they have all the facts when they go in to check about it in that particular race.
Yeah. Well, you know, you do have to work with whoever's in that job. So, typically, you know, you, in my position, you try to be very apolitical. But I will just tell you that I was one of probably, I don't know what the final number was, of school administrators, principals, superintendents, that signed a petition, a letter of, basically, of vote of no confidence in Superintendent Burrissey last week. So, you know, my name is going to be public here pretty quick as somebody that does not have confidence in our current state leadership. And in addition to that, 40 members of the Oklahoma House Representatives and State Senate also signed a document last week voicing their support of Joy Hoffmeister in opposition to Secretary Burrissey. And, you know, I've been, I've been an Oklahoma educator for 35 years. I've been in education for almost 40. And I will tell you that it's unprecedented for elected officials of the same political party to make a public statement against an elected official of the same political party. And it's highly unusual for school leaders, whether it be superintendents, principals, assistant superintendents, directors, whoever it is, to publicly sign anything, put their name on anything, in opposition to either a state-appointed or a state-elected, a state superintendent of public instruction. And that's just where we are right now. Obviously, we have an election coming up, and, you know, the voters in Oklahoma are going to decide what they want. And if it ends up that Secretary Burrissey is reelected as state superintendent of public instruction, then we'll, you know, probably will try to find a way to bury the hatchet, so to speak, and see if there's some, a way that we can get on the same page and work together, rather than in opposition to each other. But, you know, she's made it very clear early on that she believes that superintendents are obstructionist, and that our voice doesn't matter, which, you know, I kind of think is pretty unusual. You know, she was not elected to be the superintendent of every school district in Oklahoma. She was elected to be the superintendent of public instruction. So, it's been interesting to watch what's happened the last four years. And it really, and I think what it boils down to, at the end of the day, do, you know, who should make the big decisions about education in Oklahoma? Should it be made by local school officials and local boards of education? Or should it all rest with either the Oklahoma State Department of Education or the United States Department of Education? You know, now, the State Department of Education leadership would argue that, you know, they would argue for local control. But for what, what local control means to them is control in Oklahoma City. It doesn't mean control of education decisions in Ponca City or Blackwell and New Kirk or Tonka Wall. And I think that's really where we are. There's, obviously, there's, the state has a vested interest in seeing that we have quality education in our state. But, you know, we've done that for almost, really, almost 190 years. We've had public education, tax-supported, non-sectarian schools in this country for about 190 years now. The majority of that history was the state set some broad goals of what education should look like, and then they left it up to local boards, working with local superintendents, implement programs that then made those common schools. You know, we've not been perfect in how we've operated our schools. We've been maybe slow to make some changes we should have made. And there's always a role for the state to try to prod us to be better, and, you know, that we need to expect more for kids, from kids. That's always acceptable. But it seems like that at least for the last four years, we've had a concentrated effort to micromanage local school districts and to, and to drive parents out of public schools into either charters or some type of private school environment. And, you know, I don't agree with that. Just pretty simple.
Anything else before we let you go today?
Well, last week, Governor Fallon signed into law a bill that eliminates Common Core in Oklahoma. I've had some people ask me, "What does that mean?" And the answer is, "I don't know." We're in limbo right now, waiting to see what the State Department does. We've operated with some sort of standards in this state since the 1990s. I, I think that in our zeal to strike back at federal overreach, or what a perception of federal overreach, we've just opened ourselves up to more federal overreach. Secretary Duncan, in a White House press conference, singled Oklahoma out for eliminating Common Core, and basically, you know, kind of a veiled thread about what the federal government was going to do. And, you know, I don't know. I, I don't really believe the administration has a lot. I'd be surprised that only two years left, that they want to engage in a big battle with our state over what we do with standards. I mean, they may want to. They may withhold all federal funds. I mean, I don't know what they're going to do. You know, what I would tell people is, you know, Common Core, everybody that's unhappy with anything in education right now, using test scores for teacher evaluation, making students pass Friday the 7th test to get a high school diploma, requiring students to pass a test in the 3rd grade to read, and individuals who think that because the federal government made Common Core a part of Race to the Top, that they were forcing these standards on the states. Anybody that's unhappy has lumped everything in, under the Common Core umbrella. And those are all different issues. And, you know, we've always had standards. It was time for standards to be revised. It happened to be that they were labeled Common Core standards. You know, I know that our, we've got, this legislation says we're going to develop our own standards. It's kind of, I don't know why we want to spend tens of millions of dollars developing new standards, or different standards, that at the end of the day are going to look a whole lot like the Common Core standards that already exist. And the reason for that is because those are the new standards. You know, that, the SAT and the ACT test, the exams that our students have to take to go to college, have already made the shift to an assessment that is, that is more driven by students' ability to analyze and synthesize information. The new standards that were called Common Core were put into place to prepare students to be able to do what we call higher-order thinking skills, which is analyze and synthesize information. So, whether or not we have Common Core, our students are going to be tested on the SAT and the ACT test on, as if the standards, as if the instruction they're receiving, they had, they, was based on those type of standards. So, whatever standards we develop are going to have to be focused on higher-order thinking skills. Again, they're going to look a whole lot like the Common Core standards that are, have already been developed, because there's not, it's, you know, it's just not, it's not a whole lot of wiggle room in there to do anything much different. Tell you what it reminds me of, Phil. It reminds me of the debate between 6-on-6 and 5-on-5 girls' basketball. You know, you, you had a group of people in this state, and I was one of them, who was resistant to making the change to 5-on-5 girls' basketball. I liked the 6-on-6 game. I thought it was a great game for girls. I thought it, it did a great job at developing ball-handling skills, and it was its own game, and it was different. And so, it made the girls' game and the boys' game different. They weren't the same game. And I, the 5-on-5 girls' basketball that I saw 15 years ago was just a bad version of the boys' game. But we eventually, we may be, I think we were the last state to make the change, but we made the change. And, you know, the quality of girls' basketball has improved tremendously since then. It's no longer a bad version of the boys' game. It's a different version of the boys' game, but it's, but it's good basketball. And to me, this is kind of the same thing. You know, we can hang out here on the edge, and we can, and we can throw our fist at the National Governors Association, and it, whoever we want to in Washington, DC. But at the end of the day, we're going to end up with standards that are the same as everybody else in the nation has. There may be a little tweak here or there, maybe, but, but we could do that anyway. We could adopt the Common Core standards, sit down and review them, and make the tweaks where we want to make them, and do it for a whole lot less money than we're going to spend. And do it for a whole lot less money than we're gonna spend. In this district, we made a decision last fall that we weren't gonna play the Common Core game. In that we knew that at the, at the end of the day, for us, what we want is we wanna know that our students are either ready for college or they're ready to go to the career tech and get the training they need to be successful. And so how do we measure that? Well, the measure we use in Oklahoma is the ACT test. All of our state universities, that's the test they use. And ACT, in addition to their ACT exam, they also have an exam called the Work Keys, which tells, which gives students a score and it tells them whether or not they're ready to go receive training for the jobs that exist, okay? It happens to be in Ponca City, our career tech's done a lot of work, and they've decided that a Work Key score of silver, if you're at the silver, that's how they do it, they do it gold, silver, platinum, or I don't remember now, bronze, silver, gold, whatever it is. But they've decided that, that in the Work Keys test, that if, that a silver, that a silver level, if you score in the silver level, then you're ready to go into the training programs that our career tech has in place. And so we made the decision last fall that we were gonna structure, we were gonna align our curriculum in this district with the ACT, um, standard's not the right word, it's more of an ACT course alignment that's called ASPIRE. So that, so that what you do as a sixth grader builds into what happens in the seventh grade, which builds into the eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and then, excuse me, you're ready for the ACT test. And, and there are assessments along the way that tells you where students are so that, so that you can, you know, if, if their math score's not what it needs to be to be successful on the ACT test, then you've got a kind of, you can look, you can tell specifically where their weaknesses are, and so you can start working on those weaknesses. The idea being that when, that when students walk across our stage, that they'll have the ACT score they need to go to the college or university of their choice, or they'll have a Work Key score that they need to be ready to go to the career tech and receive additional training and be ready to go into the workforce. We think that's what we oughta do. So we had already made that decision. And so we had already started that process of aligning our curriculum to fit with the ASPIRE. And that's what we're gonna do. Obviously, you know, if the state, when the state adopts new standards, we'll sit down and we'll look at those standards and we'll see where they match up with ASPIRE. Uh, we happen to believe that the ASPIRE standards are a more, or this ASPIRE alignment makes our kids more college and career-ready than, than the Common Core did. I would argue that it's a higher level, you know? Typically, states set minimum standards and school districts can always rise above that. And so that's the direction that we're headed. So that's what we're gonna do.
Do any other schools do the ASPIRE method?
There are, a lot of people are talking about it. I don't, I think we may be the first to adopt it. We've had some people contact us, wanna know what we're doing and, and, you know, we're pretty good about jumping out there on the edge and, and, uh, and leading with our chin sometimes. So, you know, we may, we may take a few blows along the way, but, but we just, because I don't, I didn't want to engage our community in the Common Core discussion because I thought it was a no-win deal. You know, those people who, who believe that the Common Core is Obama Core, there's no way you're ever gonna change their mind. And we know all the work our faculty had done in, in ma- in making that transition and working with, all the work that had gone in to make that transition to Common Core, and we didn't wanna lose that. So we had to find something that would allow us to, um, do what was right for our students and not get, um, caught up into a conversation that at the end of the day was distracting from our mission. And our mission is to provide, to prepare our students to live and work in a global society, to be ready for the post-secondary education of their choice. So how do we do that? And I think we do that by having a curriculum that's focused on an end result, which is the ACT test and the Work Keys test. Now, but, you know, something else may come along in the future, but, uh, you know, gosh, since, as long as I can remember, the ACT's kinda been the gold standard. I mean, as parents, we, we, you know, we know we want our children to have, and we know we need an ACT, they need this ACT score to go to this college. They need this ACT score, they don't have to take a remedial class. So we know, so, you know, that's, that's been what we've worked for. Now, we think that we're better aligned than we've ever been and, and what we hope to see is, you know, I don't know that our overall ACT average will increase very much, but a greater percentage of our students who want to go on to college will have that ACT score they need. And we also anticipate that even though our remediation rate is low compared to other school districts in Oklahoma, we, we would like to drive that remediation rate to zero. And we think this, that, that this track gives us the best chance to see that happen.
Dr. Pennington, thank you very much. And that's gonna do it for this edition of the Board Round.